Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Good morning.
Today is Tuesday, June 21st, 2016. It's 9:00 AM. We're at Palm Coast City Hall for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nettles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Here.
Councilmember D'Onville?
Here.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Here.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. Before we begin with our regular agenda, I'd like to again ask for a moment of silence in recognition of the terrible tragedies that have occurred in the city of Orlando. Please keep the victims and their families in your thoughts, your hopes, and your prayers. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. First item on agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 7th council meeting and the June 14th city council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
Second?
Moved in second. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Gent item number two, proclamation recognizing amateur radio week June 8th through June 19th through June 26th. Mr. DiLorenzo.
Whereas amateur radio has historically played a significant role in developing worldwide radio communications, and whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between peoples, societies, and countries by creating friendships and the sharing of ideas; and whereas Palm Coast, Florida has a great many radio amateurs who continuously demonstrate their value in public assistance; and whereas the radio amateurs of the city of Palm Coast and of Flagler County are on alert for tornadoes, floods, hurricane, wildfires, and other local emergencies, and utilize their communication skills to assist city, county, and state officials; and whereas the radio amateurs of the city of Palm Coast and of Flagler County have generously and repeatedly donated their considerable energy, effort, time, and equipment to provide communication support to local service clubs and organizations at no charge; and whereas the radio amateurs of the city of Palm Coast and Flagler County offer free technical training to all interested citizens; and whereas the city of Palm Coast recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarn program of NOAA's National Weather Service, part of the U.S. Department of Commerce; and whereas amateur radio once again proved its undisputed relevance in the modern world by providing emergency communications when other systems failed, in the devastation of Hurricanes Katrina and Rita in the USA, and in the tsunami catastrophe overseas; whereas the radio amateurs of the city of Palm Coast and of Flagler County continue to hone their communication skills by operating the 24-hour simulated emergency known as American Radio Relay League Field Day on June 25th and June 26th, 2016. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Palm Coast mayor and city council do hereby designate June 19th through June 26th, 2016 as Amateur Radio Week. In recognition of this important emergency preparedness exercise, we call upon all citizens to pay tribute to all the amateur radio operators of our community. Signed this 21st day of 2016, John Nettles, Mayor. I don't believe we have a representative, and perhaps later if we do, we'll have an opportunity to hear from them.
Thank you very much. Gent item number three, proclamation recognizing June 14th, 2016 through July 4th, 2016 as Patriotic Palm Coast Week. Whereas the American Flag Project is a Florida nonprofit organization based in Palm Coast; and whereas the goal of the American Flag Project is to do its small part to inspire pride in our country, the United States of America, by providing U.S. flags to residents and businesses; and whereas patriotism isn't just a flag, but it's a good start with the 13 stripes of the flag representing the 13 British colonies that revolted against tyranny and won, and the 50 white stars representing the 50 unique states that make up the United States of America; and whereas the American Flag Project is on a mission to make its hometown of Palm Coast the most patriotic city in America through a display of U.S. flags at houses and businesses across the city on the 4th of July and beyond; and whereas to achieve this goal, between Flag Day and July 4th, 2016, the American Flag Project is distributing free, made in USA, flags at some 20 locations around Palm Coast, and encourages every resident and business to display the flag today and every day. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the period from June 14th and July 4th, 2016 be officially designated as Patriotic Palm Coast Week in the city of Palm Coast, and encourage residents and businesses to show their patriotism and fly their flags. Signed this 21st day of June, 2016, city of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nettles, Mayor. Nikki and Larry White are the originators of this. You have the floor.
Thank you very much.
Three minutes.
Three minutes? Oh, I did it as an elevator. Good morning. Today is June 21st, 2016, and there are three significant events today. First of all, today is the beginning, well, it is, the summer solstice. The second event is that tonight is the full moon for the month of June, and the third is, of course, this proclamation for our patriotic goal. Everyone relates to the flag in their own unique way. Childhood memories. Remember the day you learned the Pledge of Allegiance? And some of us even had to learn the Declaration of Independence, and that pride you felt the day you could say it all by yourself. There's military experiences. Those are wide and varied, and some sad and some very positive, but they're usually accompanied with a flag. And then maybe it's only the 4th of July parade and your fireworks that brings the patriotism to the surface. And then, of course, my very favorite is the day Neil Armstrong put the flag on the moon. However it touches your emotions, most people recognize that feeling as pride. See, I can't talk about the flag without feeling pride. That's how it comes out on me. Anyway, however, however you experience the pride of this country, the flag represents patriotism, and we could use a lot of that during this year, particularly since it's an election year. And Larry and I want to thank you all for supporting us with this proclamation, supporting the pride and patriotism that we want to bring to Palm Coast, to the state of Florida, and to the rest of the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
Can we do the banner also with us?
Yeah.
(inaudible).
Mr. D'Onville, would you mind coming over here?
Okay. Come on, it's not bad.
All right, we can fit. Perfect. All right, we're gonna do a couple. One, two, three. Couple more. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. (applause)
Recognition Week.
Whereas caregivers are tasked with the most admirable, loving responsibility to giving hope, inspiration, and protection to those who are not capable of taking care of themselves; and whereas caregivers consistently offer a gentle soothing tenderness to their patients by bathing, dressing, massaging, completing household chores, preparing meals, managing medications, and encouraging mental alertness. And whereas over 61 million compassionate caregivers across the United States are committed to keeping our grandparents, parents, aunts, uncles, siblings, children, and friends healthy and safe, either in their homes, in hospitals, nursing homes, doctor's office, and assisted living facilities. And whereas both the caregiver and the patient frequently approach their relationship with common dignity and spirit so that the bond between them strengthens with the confidence that goes far beyond the basic standard of care. And whereas caregivers often provide such plentiful care and devotion for their patients, their support can lead to their own physical and mental strain with little concern for their personal well-being. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Palm Coast mayor and city council officially designate the week of June 20th to the 27th, 2016 as Caregiver Recognition Week in Palm Coast, and urge our entire community to remember not only the quality of service they give to our residents and need, but also the quality of love they put into what they are doing. Signed this 18th day of June, 2016, city of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nettles, Mayor.
Hello. My name is Shonda Nobles-Milton. I'm the senior GM with Vitas Healthcare. On the behalf of everyone, mayor, vice mayor, councilmen and women, I would like to say thank you. We are truly committed to the residents of Palm Coast. We currently serve a little over 100 patients in this area, but we realize that it doesn't stop with the patient. There are caregivers that are in the trenches 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we want to make sure for the residents of Palm Coast that we hear them, we be there for them by providing bereavement support groups, caregiver symposiums. We have one coming up this Saturday, What About Me? And we really want to make sure that the community know, not only do we, you know, have a business here in Palm Coast, but we are committed to serving. I always believed to whom much is given, much is required, and we want to make sure that the community not only see us as a business in the community, but a true partnership and a true community of love and care and support that we will continue to have for our caregivers throughout. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
All right, perfect. We'll need to do a couple. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you.
I got it.
Thank you so much.
You and my wife. Thank you. You know, we hear the phrase aging in place, and it's caregivers that allow that to happen here in Palm Coast. Certainly, they're part of the process. Gent item number five, presentation update and overview of revenue sources and property taxes. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, city council, this is our ongoing series that is tied into our budget process each year. This year, Lena talked Chris into combining these two into one presentation, so, and I've learned who the boss is now. So, this is going to be a combination of both the revenue sources and a property tax overview. So, Lena, if you will take it from here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Landon.
Morning.
Just a quick look at our budget preparation timeline. Today's presentation is the last in a series of three for our budget preparation series. In just a few weeks, we'll be back to start our budget workshops, and that'll begin with the general fund. This is just a look at what today's presentation will cover. We'll be discussing our revenue classifications and looking at them in a little bit more detail. We'll also take a closer look at the ad valorem taxes and what our trim process timeline looks like, and also some revenue diversification options.
Okay. There's a number of, and I apologize for being a little froggy. I was told yesterday I was extremely monotone because of my cold, so again, I apologize in advance. But the city's revenues roll up into about a half a dozen primary categories. These are the categories that you, anyone would actually see on our audited financial statements or our budget reports. They're on the screen, taxes, permits fees, intergovernmental revenue, charges for services, et cetera. And we're used to seeing them this way with our revenue pie. Again, about 40% of our revenues come from direct fees for services. To look a little bit further at taxes, what falls into that category, of course, is property tax. Our local optional fuel tax falls into the tax category. Important thing to remember about the fuel tax is that it's restricted for transportation expenditures only, and it's based on a six cent per gallon fuel tax within the county. Our small county surtax, which is part of our 7% sales tax, about half, it's half a percent of the 7%, the spending of that is actually directed by a Flagler County ordinance, and this is our primary revenue source for our capital projects fund for projects such as the Holland Park renovation. Communication services tax, rate of 5.22%. This is a tax on telecommunications services, cell phones, things of that nature. It's currently allocated to the general fund, to general revenues. We have other taxes such as our business tax receipt. Some people, the old term is an occupational license, but the new term is business tax receipt. And then there's also public service taxes, most of which are, all of which listed here are not currently in use in the city, electric, water, natural gas, and propane. Those are essentially a sales tax, similar sales tax item on utility services.
Chris, why is the community, the communication service tax, why is that allocated to the general fund? Why isn't it a standalone enterprise fund?
The communication services tax, according to state rules, are, it's up to the city council to determine through the budget process how they want that applied, and it has traditionally been applied to the general fund to offset the need for additional property taxes.
Thank you.
Intergovernmental revenue is another one of the terms that we talk a lot about. Over in the far right, probably the biggest variable within this particular area are grants, so things like $10 million grant for Palm Coast Parkway six-laning would fall in there. Our state revenue sharing collections, where we get a piece of the state revenue sharing pot, which is broken into two sections, a section that's based on fuel taxes and a section that's unrestricted. Those come through this area, as well as a portion of the state's 6% sales tax. We also get a piece of that, and that comes through our intergovernmental revenue. And then the fire insurance premium tax, which we've talked about, which is applied to the volunteer firefighter pension plan. Permits fees and special assessments, some major examples here are franchise fees. We currently do have a solid waste and a natural gas franchise fee in the city. We don't have any utility franchise fees, such as water and electricity. Special assessments would be items like the Old Kings Road Special Assessment or the Code Newson Special Assessment, which the city council will be getting that information here in the next couple of weeks that we set annually. Those are the unpaid code bills that get onto the property tax bills. Charges for services basically is a fancy term for, you get what you pay for. In other words, if you receive a service, we charge you for it like you would out in the general public just going to the store. Of course, all of our combined utility fees and our combined utility bill, water, sewer, solid waste, and stormwater, a variety of impact fees. One thing to note with the impact fees, at the very bottom, we do, on our building permits, collect the school, the Flagler County School impact fee, and then turn that around to them, you know, just part of an intergovernmental program, but we don't really keep the school impact fees. Those go to the school board. Some other fees, we have annual fire inspection fees, state road maintenance fees, course fees at like the golf course, tennis center, parks and wrecks, various planning and building permit fees. Judgments, fines, and forfeitures, this would be much larger. For instance, the county, anybody that runs a court system, this is a much larger portion of their revenue. For us, it's a fairly minor portion of our revenue, but things like the red light camera violations, a portion of the traffic tickets within Palm Coast from the sheriff's office come back to us, as well as local ordinance violations such as parking in a swell, various code fines, and animal control fines. And again, other sources, these are generally things that aren't considered revenue when you're out in the public sector. Payment in lieu of tax transfers, the tax increment for the CRA, any kind of debt proceeds from loans or bonds are actually considered revenues on governmental financial statements as well, as well as primarily the budget. And then internal charges, of course, we have our fleet charges, where the fleet charges the various departments for the actual fleet maintenance and replacement. Those are considered revenues for our budgeting standpoint, but are not generally considered revenues out in the, in the public sector.
Chris, can you give us an example of a pilot?
Sure. The, basically, payment in lieu of taxes, it varies from entity to entity, but it's an entity that typically doesn't pay taxes, but uses services and will basically negotiate oftentimes with a governmental entity in order to pay something towards those governmental services. So, where you see big ones, like in, let's say, like in New York City, I use this example, some of the big churches in New York City that have a lot of people go there, they have a fair police presence at those churches. That is a cost to the city, the taxpayers of New York, to have that police presence. So, they'll negotiate, because they don't pay property taxes, they'll negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes to help offset the costs of those kinds of services. So, that's, that's the general, you know, definition of payment in lieu of taxes.
Thank you.
So now to the ad valorem or property tax review. The, our whole property tax methodology is determined by the state. It's called the truth in millage or trim process. Basically, June 1st is our first big date. That's when we get the preliminary property values, taxable value within the city. By July 1st, we get the more honed down, more official taxable values, and July 1st really becomes the start of the state calendar of when you have to get everything done in order to levy property taxes. So basically, by the end of July, we have to set our maximum millage rate, which we do each year, and we'll be working with city council the whole month of July on. At that point, it's reported to the property assessor's office and through to the state, and that generates our trim notices, which are these white documents. This is a sample of the trim notice, which comes out sometime in middle of August, and basically what the trim notice says is, hey, this is what you paid last year for your taxes countywide. This is what you'd pay this year if no one wants to raise their millage rate past the rollback rate. And then this is what you might pay if everybody keeps their current maximum millage rate, and that's the final column. And then all the way over in the right is the date and time of the first budget hearing for all of the various entities that are taxing you within your county or district. So the public hearings can only be held Monday through Friday after 5:00 PM. In our case, we have to defer to the Board of County Commissioners and the school board, and once they schedule theirs, we kind of fit in around them. That first public hearing, again, is advertised on the actual trim notice, and at that first public hearing, city council would set the tentative millage rate and budget at that first hearing. At the conclusion of the first hearing, we would then schedule the second hearing. Typically, they're really scheduled simultaneously for roughly two weeks later. Then we have specific advertising requirements from the state, how we have to advertise for those hearings in the newspaper, and then city council would consider and adopt the final millage rate and final budget at the second hearing, and usually mid to late And then once that's done, we in finance still have a number of filings we have to do to complete the trim process. That all has to be done within the next 30 days. So property taxes in general, the question, of course, is, well, how do you determine my property taxes? Well, the county property assessor's office assesses the value of each property within the city, within the county, with a date of January 1st of each year. They apply various exemptions to that assessed value to get down to your taxable value. This is an example we've talked about in previous years to take into account the save our homes, the way the state of Florida works for homesteaded properties. The first column in year one, the blue box represents the market value of your home, and the red color represents the taxable value. In this hypothetical example, they're equal in year one, and of course, the city is doing extremely well, and property market values are increasing 50% per year in this example. And you can see that, that the blue bar keeps growing and growing and growing at 50% per year as far as the market value of your home, but the actual taxable value bar, which is the red bar, is barely moving, and that's because homesteaded properties can only increase the taxable value a maximum of 3% per year. It's really the lesser of 3% of the CPI. The last few years, it's been the CPI because it's been fairly low. So in this particular example, you can see how over time, the market value, as the market value of a property grows, the taxable value of the property doesn't grow that much. So then, once we have the taxable value established, we take a look at the budget, and then based on the budget and the taxable value, we come up with a millage rate that will provide the property taxes needed to basically cover that budget for the year. Remember, in a general fund, the property taxes are about 50% of the total revenue within the general fund budget. The rollback rate, just quickly as a definition, is that's, that would be the rate that would be in place to get the same amount of taxes as you did the previous year, not taking into account any kind of new growth, new taxable value growth. So it's a millage rate comparison. This one, we always look at this, it's a very powerful slide. We look at the cities that have a similar population as we do in a $70,000, $100,000 range in Florida. There's 12 cities with millage in that range. It's up from, from 10, from, from last year. Palm Coast is the second lowest millage rate in the state, second to Boca Raton. I'm not sure that that would ever really change just because of the nature of Boca Raton. Some of the things to note, if you look across that, that line too where it says Palm Coast, our taxable value was, last year was just over 4.1 billion. If you want to compare that to the very bottom, Fort Myers, not that different in actual population, a little higher taxable value than us, but over double the millage rate that we have. That's for a lot of different reasons, a lot of different ways that they fund their services, but it's just how different Palm Coast is than the rest of the state when it comes to our actual tax burden. The other item all the way over in the right is whether these cities also levy the public service tax or utility tax, and each one of these levy all the, a number of public service taxes, where we don't levy any public service taxes currently. Palm Coast is the second lowest millage rate in the state, second to Boca Raton. I'm not sure that that would ever really change just because of the nature of Boca Raton. Some of the things to note, if you look across that line too where it says Palm Coast, our taxable value was, last year was just over 4.1 billion. If you want to compare that to the very bottom, Fort Myers, not that different in actual population, a little higher taxable value than us, but over double the millage rate that we have. That's for a lot of different reasons, a lot of different ways that they fund their services, but it's just how different Palm Coast is than the rest of the state when it comes to our actual tax burden. The other item all the way over in the right is whether these cities also levy the public service tax or utility tax. And each one of these levy all the, a number of public service taxes where we don't levy any public service taxes currently. This, again, is our millage rate history. We look at this each year.
Chris, I'm going to interrupt. That screen is, if you go back one, is just absolutely critical for how we operate. And, you know, we oftentimes get, well, we need another senior senator or two, or we need to start providing this service or that service. As you can tell from this, we have historically kept our taxes extremely low. And as I always say, every time you want to do that, you can do that as a council, as a community, but you can't keep the revenue the same. You have to pay for it some way. And this is, right here, a great example of how many communities end up paying for it is by increasing the millage rate. Boca Raton is an anomaly in the fact that its taxable value is so large for the size of its community, but, you know, they also have, collect substantially more taxes than us, $50 million more. So I think it's very important to keep that in mind as we go forward with budget, that, you know, if you're going to keep the tax rate like it is, you can't add additional services. You can add additional services, but you're going to have to pay for them, and primarily by the millage rate going up.
And there's one other thing I'd like to point out. This public service tax, which Palm Coast does not levy, we are an anomaly. Almost all communities in Florida do that. We're second lowest, and that probably wouldn't change, but what you need to get a true comparison is if you took the amount of money that Boca Raton, Davie, Fort Myers acquired through the public service taxes and added that to the property tax collections, we would be even lower proportionately. The issue that, and this is a question that has been discussed ever since we incorporated as a city, should we, should we not levy the public service tax? It's a, it's a sales tax on utilities, in essence. The question, from a very selfish perspective for the resident, is, okay, I buy electricity. I would pay this public service tax on my electricity. That would generate revenue for the city. In theory, the city could keep the property tax lower or lower it to compensate. But the real issue is the relative amount of spending on public service taxes. Who uses more electricity proportionally? The resident or Walmart? The resident or Target? The resident or Smoothie King? The public service taxes for a community that has a significant amount of retail, commercial, and industrial tax base could very easily shift some of the burden away from the residential taxpayer to your other taxing entities, taxpaying entities. So that's a question that's always been discussed. We've never really had a clear, clear picture of what that differential would be. The opponents to levying a public service tax say, oh, that's just one more tax, and what assurances do we have that you'd lower the property taxes commensurately? Well, that's the issue that we always face. But to Mr. Landon's other point, and I'm glad that we do this long budget development process, because it used to irk me that we would hold the line, hold the line, hold the line on taxes, hold the line on taxes, and then immediately after the budget is passed, oh, but we need, but we need, but we need. There's no free lunch. When you establish the maximum millage rate, which is the first step in the TRIM process, traditionally, we put that number a little higher than what we anticipate our tax rate will be because we're still bringing in other projects that we may need to incorporate into our budget. But the point is that you can never exceed that. And then you do your preliminary tax, you can never exceed that. So the rate can only go down through the budget process, it can't go up. So my caution to council, to residents is, if there's something that we need, if there's something that we want, the earlier in the budget process that's brought to the table, the more likely we're going to be able to meet those needs or desires.
And as Chris continues on, particularly with the public service tax, electric tax, he's actually got some slides with some of the comparisons to further highlight, would you, your points, Mayor? But yes, this is, we're not doing this just for information. We're actually trying to generate the thought process as we go into budget, so you can start thinking about, okay, you know, how are we going to pay for things? What is, you know, the appropriate revenue for our needs? You know, expenditures will come up next as we go through this. So, Chris, if you'll continue, please.
Thank you. Excuse me. So 2008, again, being our peak year, just over $7 billion in property value. 2016, we were at four, just under 4.2 billion, again, about 40% lower than our peak. Our fiscal year '17 at the, band at the bottom, preliminary taxable value is about 4.3 billion, so a little bit of an increase, about a 4% increase, which is good. Just that kind of an interesting side note, I was at the Florida Government Finance Officers Association meeting last week, and in fact, on a discussion of revenue diversification, and a number of the cities that I was talking to in there, the question had come up, well, how have you done as far as your taxable value? Is it back to the 2008, 2009 kind of levels? Almost everybody in the room was close to or just below their 2008 or 2009 level. In our case, we're still about 38, 39% below our 2008 level. Just kind of indicates how much of a boom we had and how much of a drop we had when the change in the economy, that we're still, in terms of recovering that lagging behind what I'm hearing from a lot of other cities. So just kind of a side note.
If I also could highlight on this one, that from 2008, and then you go down to 2011, we reduced our property tax receipts, and amount of property taxes that our residents and our businesses paid by 25% during that period. A lot of people did not recognize the kind of decrease we made during the Great Recession. Yes, it's gone up slightly, but nothing close to getting back to the $20 million we had at the peak in 2008.
And this graph shows you the advantages of revenue diversification. If you put all your eggs in one basket, that is, property taxes, you have no control over property values. You hit a recession, your revenues are drastically reduced, and there's nothing you can do about it short of drastically raising the taxes. If you had, for example...
Or drastically cutting services.
Or drastically cutting services, but nobody seems to want to do that. But if you had that utility franchise tax, that remains pretty well level, because you still use the same amount of electricity to heat your home, cool your home, whatever you do with electricity. So diversification is always a good thing. Put your eggs in more than one basket. Anyway, thank you.
This, of course, is a property tax bill, mine, in fact. One of the things, just want to point out for the benefit of the public, because I get a lot of phone calls on the total property tax bill, is that the City Council and the city only has control over the very bottom line. That's what we get from the actual combined property tax bill, and our portion is somewhere around, traditionally, somewhere around 20% of the total tax bill here in Flagler County that actually comes back directly to the city. This is another interesting graph. The blue bars represent millage rates, and as you can see, from 2013 on, they've been relatively flat, decreasing slightly. The red line represents property values. It's just, it was just an interesting graph to kind of take a look at this, because a lot of people believe that the actual property values and millage rates have a direct one-to-one correlation in terms of how they grow or how they shrink, and this graph really shows that that's not true. And you can really see that through the, through the actual kind of trend line. You can see that that's kind of a low trend line, whereas when you look at the actual property values, that slope is so much greater, not to get too mathematical here, but the idea is that they have, they are related, but what really drives the millage rate, the property taxable values are what they are. What drives the millage rate is exactly what you were discussing before, it's the services that need to be provided. That's what ultimately drives the millage rate. And this is just a quick graph of our, oh, sorry, of our adopted millage rates versus the rollback rates going back to 2012, 2013, and 14. We were right at rollback rate. In the last couple of years, we were coming in a little bit above the actual rollback Again, this is our pie that we use very often of, well, what do my property taxes pay for? Well, somewhere around 60%, nearly 60% of the pie goes to pay for just public safety, police and fire protection. Just under 40% is for all the street and park maintenance, and that includes things like street lights and sidewalks and litter removal. And then a small portion goes for capital projects primarily in the stormwater. Excuse me. We use this, next couple of slides at Citizens Academy, we find them to be fairly effective when discussing taxes with citizens. And what we do is we go ahead and we add up all of the tax revenues that the city receives, both what we generate ourselves and what are passed down through to us either through grants or other intergovernmental revenues, and we compare that to the population. So including grants, the city receives in the current fiscal year $38 per month or $455 per year per citizen. If we take out the grants, but grants are our tax money, just coming back to us from state or federal funds, our own source revenues are $33 a month or $393 a year.
Chris, is that per resident or per household?
Per individual, per resident, yeah. So then the question is, well, what do I get for that? Well, again, this pays for all of your emergency services. It pays for code enforcement, housing programs, all the street maintenance, resurfacing, all your parks and trails and litter removal, and as well as construction of some of these items, such again, not to, not to keep picking at a sore point, but the Holland Park renovation. All of that is paid for by these particular taxes. And when you look at this, and what I try to do is put it in perspective, most of our cell phone bills are way more than $38 a month, okay? If I had to pay, if I had to write a check to the city instead of taxes, I would happily pay $38 a month just to have fire and police protection. I don't think anybody would argue that it's not worth $38 a month. So, you know, when you talk about efficiency, when you talk about what you actually get for your tax money, I think this is a pretty powerful slide to show really how low our taxes are for the services that are provided here in the city.
This is not just property tax. This is...
Every tax.
Sales tax, all taxes combined.
All taxes, including grants, any kind of state, anything that would be, even look like a tax is included in this particular analysis. So revenue diversification, this is one of our performance measures, is part of our strategic action plan to bring this before City Council each year. Kind of the three items that we continue to look at are special assessments, franchise fees, and of course, the utility tax or public service tax. The idea of special assessments is they do have some restrictions on their use. Typically, the franchise fees are public service taxes for the benefit of budgeting and City Council priorities are unrestricted, and council really can direct those to be used for anything that they feel they see fit. When we talk about special assessments, the biggest one is a fire assessment fee. This is very, very popular right now in Florida. It's taking pressure, they're using it to take pressure off of the millage rate. The biggest thing is really equity, making sure that everybody is paying their fair share for the fire and rescue, actual function within the city. What happens is, a actual study is done to determine what fees can be recouped through a fire assessment. That amount is then billed equitably to every citizen in the city, regardless of what the taxable value of your property is. And then that amount of the budget is actually removed from the calculation of the need for property taxes.
And who does this study, Chris?
There's a number of private entities that you can bring in to do this study. We, you know, even our rate consultants that we use on our utility, rate consultants, they have a division that does fire assessment fee determination. It would have, a study would have to be done, and City Council, you know, would really need to take a look at, you know, the impact of what that would be. Again, the electric franchise fee is another one that we've talked about. One of the things here that the mayor had mentioned a little bit earlier is that when we took a look at the electric usage, obviously, commercial entities use more electricity than residential entities, so as a whole, the commercial group would pay a little bit more of this than residents would. Just as an example, and these numbers are a little bit dated, a 6% electric franchise fee, which is kind of the standard, would generate somewhere around $4 million of revenue annually. And again...
What we had, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
And the amount would be at the sole discretion for City Council to determine how it's used.
Do we have any idea what that would equate to a resident?
It would be 6% of whatever, it wasn't the full bill. It was a portion of the bill, it was about 60% of your bill would be subject to the fee.
6%.
I do have some old numbers that I can pass on to you, but they're kind of dated now.
Good. At a typical bill, I'd say that what this would apply to during the summer, easy figure, $100? So 6% of that would be...
$6.
$6.
So $100 or $60?
Six.
Six.
No, you said 60% of the bill.
No, no, it wasn't based on the whole bill.
Right. So what I'm saying is, I think during the summer, most people will probably a little over $100?
Oh, yes.
$100. So it wouldn't be the whole bill. So, you know, if it's $200, then it would be $12.
Well, it would be a portion of that. If your, if your total bill were 200, 60% of that would be quick healthy.
$120.
$120, and then 6% of that would be whatever.
$7.26. Right. But we have the information that we received from FPL a few years ago, councilman, and, you know, I can provide that to you, what those calculations are. It was the same for the utility tax. They provided us information on basically what the average bill was at that time within the community for residential bills and what, basically, approximately what the taxes would generate.
I need to interrupt one more time, because many years ago, this was a topic of discussion of City Council, and one of the opposing concepts was that if we were to impose this electric franchise fee or a public service fee, it would impact retail, commercial, and industrial, and we would be perceived as being business unfriendly. The reality is, as you pointed out earlier, we are probably the only one in this area that doesn't have this. So we would be no, right now, we're more business friendly than anybody else with respect to this particular item, so.
Franchise fee is actually considered like rent for using a right of way. See, these utilities use public right of way free of charge, and the franchise fee is, that's really what that is, is basically says, we'll let you use the right of way to put your utility lines in, but we would charge you rent for that. And then that's where the state law says you can charge up to 6% of a bill. And I have never heard of a community not have a franchise fee.
Do you know of any community in, within 100 miles that does not have this?
Why don't you go to that, go advance to that slide? We actually have that slide.
Yeah, that's, that's actually related to the public service tax, Mr. Landon. I am not aware, a lot of the franchise fee agreements are basically private agreements between that government and the utility that they're charging a franchise fee to. So there's, there's no list that I've seen of those, but I am not aware of too many that don't.
Highly, highly unusual throughout the whole country, because it's a matter, once again, public right of way and how you rent it or lease it to the utility.
Excuse me. So the idea here basically are, you know, when we take a look at revenue diversification, these are three options. Most places do not have the second and third option if they're looking at revenue diversification or trying to generate new revenues, because they already have these in place. Again, the fire assessment is new and kind of a growing methodology that's happening within the state that can take a look at. And again, really, the benefit, the big thing with the fire assessment is that everybody who's using the service should pay for the service, and especially when you have areas where you have taxable value that varies greatly, you have people who are paying a greater percentage of that service than others. And, you know, we talk about this when we talk about governmental funding versus business-type funding, where we charge you directly for the service that you use. This is just another way to try to charge somebody as close as they can for the benefit of the service. of the service that they get, to decrease the overall actual tax burden.
The main difference is, the fire assessment fee is a flat fee. Everybody pays the same dollar amount versus your property tax, which is an equation based on your property value. So you have some people paying much more than others because of the value of their property.
Right, right. So again, when we take a look at the actual public service or utility tax, or utility sales taxes, we've been talking about it, about eighty-three percent of Florida municipalities have at least one public service tax. Everybody around us has at least one public service tax, all at the maximum ten percent. Ormond, Daytona Beach, Deland has both. St. Augustine, Flagler Beach, and Bunnell have both. And so we're very much in the minority when we talk about public service taxes in the state of Florida. So some of the benefits of revenue diversification, again, these are just general benefits, potential higher level of control of the revenue sourced by city council. When we talked about the taxes and franchise fees, city council has a hundred percent control over how those can be spent. It's a decrease in the reliance on property taxes, and just remember, there is a ten mil state cap, not that we're anywhere near that right now, but that does come into play in a lot of communities. It could potentially have a more equitable distribution of the tax burden, where we have commercial versus residential, even visitors versus residents. And then again, in the case of the special assessment for fire assessments, a higher level of equity for the services provided versus the services paid for.
How would you measure that, Chris? How do you measure what your level of equity is?
Well, one of the, it's interesting, when you talk about, like I said, there's a lot out there right now on the fire services tax. One of the things that some of the communities are doing is they're looking at the actual taxable value community-wide, and then they're mapping it and saying that, okay, the folks with the lowest third of taxable value all live in this particular area or in these enclaves within the city. And then they compare that to the actual number of fire, fire and EMS runs. And they can actually do that analysis, and many cities have, and have determined that, you know, certain areas are getting the benefit of a majority of the calls, but are paying a much smaller percentage for those calls than others. So there's, there's a lot of interesting technical methodologies that are done to determine what that is within any particular city.
But it's, as you explained it then, it's not a level of equity for services, it's a level of equity that determines that of the services you render, they are primarily going to a lower taxing entity in the city. It has nothing to do with the service, the services, how fast do you respond to the call?
Right, right. It's more about paying for it.
All right.
All right, well, this is just a look ahead. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be here July twelfth for our first budget workshop, discussing the general fund. And then we'll be back on the nineteenth for the business meeting to adopt our maximum millage rate.
How exciting. It's not exciting, but it's sure necessary.
Any questions?
Questions on the presentation?
I'm just happy I didn't expire.
I got one question, Chris. When a house value decreases, like it has in two thousand eight, that becomes the level at which it can only increase at the three percent, the taxes, or?
Interestingly enough, there was actually a negative impact that we saw. It didn't really work that way, because it really wasn't written in the law that way. So what would happen first is it eats away at that difference between the market value and what you tax that. And when that's all gone, that's all gone, but your taxable value doesn't necessarily start going backwards.
Okay.
So there has been, and I can't tell you that I, I'm sure if, if or when anything's going to happen with that, but there has been some movement at the state to kind of fix that. But I don't believe anything has happened yet.
Okay. In fact, at the, the peak of the recession, it was the new home buyers who were being adversely affected, because their market value was determined by what they paid for the house, and it wasn't artificially capped at three percent. It's bizarre, but.
Yeah, and that's, that's why you always have the argument that you have two homes right next to each other that are identical. One person bought it ten years ago and has had the benefit of the Save Our Homes, and the other, and the other one might have bought and sold two or three times, and the person who buys it today may pay two hundred thousand dollars for that home, and their taxable value is going to be considerably higher than the taxable value of their neighbor because of that, that protection. But that's just the nature of the taxing system that we have.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on. Agenda item number six, resolution improving purchases for the signal optimization implementation project, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council. This looks like it's a rerun, it's because you've seen this two or three times now. But each one of them, we keep making progress. Probably one of the most common concerns or complaints I get is, are the timing of our signals. And, and so we have been working on this project to improve how long you have to wait at a red light, trying to optimize. And it's not signal, it's not synchronization because of our system, it's hard to do that, but it is truly trying to minimize wait time at our, at our signals. And we are going to be the general contractor in this case. We have a team, our traffic engineer's leading, but he also has a team in the engineering division, and then our staff out at Public Works that ties into signals and signage, our technicians. And they are going to lead this project. And so what this really is, is going out and purchasing all the components we need and the services we can't provide ourselves to do the first phase of this project. It's not intended to do all our signals at the first phase, as we stay within our budget and our capital improvement program. So Sean's going to, once again, kind of go through the overview of the program and proposal for this year that's in our current budget. And then the idea is that in future years, we'll keep adding to that. Sean, take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. Today, as Mr. Landon had stated, we are going to bring forward to you the signal optimization project, and this is going to be specifically the implementation phase for this. The objective, the objective for today is to provide you, the city council, with the implementation cost-
Go closer to the microphone, please.
Apologize.
Whispering.
The, the objective for today is to bring to you, the city council, the implementation cost for phase one, and to hopefully receive city council approval for this project. As with all, all projects that we do here in the city of Palm Coast, we want to make sure that they all fall within the objectives of our strategic action plan, and this one does specifically objectives one point one, one point two, and five point two. Moving forward with this, this project is, is meant to make our system more efficient. And by making it more efficient, what we end up doing is that we end up maximizing capacity, and we end up making the roadways safe, our roadways safer. So to do this, we plan on, we look to implement an advanced traffic management system, in short, ITMS. The benefits of ATMS, you'll see in this slide, all this data was provided to us by the U.S. Department of Transportation. You'll see reductions in travel time, increases in the average speed, fuel consumption reductions, emission reductions, the number of stops are reduced. Generally, you have reductions, and you also have reductions in delay and crashes as well.
Sean, do you have, do you have numbers that you could measure against if the system is implemented? When you say you're going to reduce travel time reduction by between eight and thirty-five percent, that's between eight and thirty-five percent of what it is today. Do you know what it is today?
I did not, I do not know what it is today.
I don't, I don't mean from memory, but if you're gonna, if you're gonna provide benefits, how are you going to know if you're receiving the benefits if you don't measure it against what it is now?
What we'll do is, is that before we get this whole thing started, we'll have our staff, including myself specifically, go out and drive the corridors, and we'll come up with some base times of how long it takes us to traverse our corridors. And then what we'll do is that as we begin to implement this, and we're able to monitor and make adjustments to our signal timings, then we'll be able to repeat the same tests and see, and test the benefit of the system.
So the numbers that you're presenting here then, Sean, as I understand you, are basically an estimate. What if you only reduce travel time by six percent? Is it a good investment?
Long-term, it is. Long-term, it is, because, because I think we have to remember that we are a community that's growing. So we're gonna, so we're gonna have more demand on our roadways as the city of Palm Coast continues to grow.
And long-term means ten, twenty years?
Long-term, yeah. I mean, from here moving forward, I, I do believe that it will be a benefit to us. I mean, we've already seen traffic on our roadways substantially increase since I started here at the city.
These benefits that you're presenting, Sean, those are, are estimates, then?
They're national, nationwide. This is across the nation. It comes from the U.S. Department of Transportation, which is an aggregate of numerous communities.
Okay, but, but my point, Mr. Landon, as I'm sure you understand, is if we, if we approve this project and spend this money and don't get these types of numbers, what then?
Well, I think Sean's point is, is that if we don't hit the national average, as we grow and have more traffic, you're going to see more and more benefits for automated system, because as more traffic occurs, you're going to have more difficulties with the manual system. So it's one of the reasons why we set priorities. If you have a signal that is lower traffic out on fringes, this system doesn't benefit as much as if you're at Oak Kings Road and Palm Coast Parkway, trying to make sure that everybody's getting through that red light with this one time, waiting for one red light.
The way I read this, Mr. Landon, is if I leave my home in the B section to come to the city council, it's going to take me thirty-five percent maximum less time to come down Bel Air as it does now.
You're probably in Bel Air, you're closer to the eight percent, because once again, you're not as heavy a traffic as you are on Palm Coast Parkway, close to I-95. As you get heavier traffic, you get more benefit.
All right.
The, I have one question. Well, I don't know if it's a question or a statement, but-
It'd be both.
Yeah. The, the, these numbers and our focus are in contradiction. So our focus is cut down delay times. That means we're gonna delay, you know, we're gonna have an increase in delay in, in, you know, when you're stopping at a light or that kind of stuff. My issue in crowded areas is more of, if you're stopping at every light, that traffic backs up, and it exponentially increases the delay each car that stops. If we don't focus on, you know, I, I know there are spots we can't synchronize, because there's too vast a distance between the lights. But there are many areas that congestion is a nightmare, and it's because cars are stopping every light or every other light and piling up. So I want to be ensured that we aren't just looking at the, you know, I, I like the smart light system, where when cars come up, the light changes, because they're not heavy areas and there's long distances between. But there are areas where synchronization is essential to really moving traffic. And if we, I just want to know, are we going to, are we going to be looking at that, or are we just looking at reducing delays?
No.
I don't know if I explained that properly, you know?
No, you did. What, what Mr. Landon had stated earlier was that, was that we're not going to be able to get all of the signals to be signal-
Correct.
Synchronized and stuff. And, and that's because of the vast distances between the signals, like you stated. And you're absolutely right about that. But in areas where we can synchronize the signals, we will.
Okay.
We will do that. And we do that now. There's some areas right now that are a little bit harder than, than others to synchronize. But, but for example, right now, Palm Coast Parkway does operate on, on three coordination plans. It operates throughout the entire week. It does have an AM, a midday, and a PM timing plans that are set out there for the, for the, specifically for the section of roadways from Flagler, from, sorry, Florida Park Drive to Pine Cone Drive. We do have timing plans in place for those areas.
Because as it increases, like, like we're talking about, as the traffic increases, we may also increase lights, especially down Bel Air.
Yes.
And then those areas will become synchronizable.
Yeah, well, they'll become-
Sections.
Well, it'll be easier to synchronize those sections. It's kind of hard for me to say synchronized, because it's, it's a term that we really don't use that, that much. We actually use, we actually talk, use coordinated signals.
Coordinate, all right, I'll switch my, I'll switch my verb.
Let me give you a real live example of, and I'll choose Bel Air. If you're coming south on Bel Air, and you hit Palm Coast Parkway westbound, so you just pass the library, you hit that signal. Then the next one is a signal that you turn into either Coles or, or-
Corporate.
Publix.
Oh, going, okay.
You're coming down south on Bel Air, okay? Then you hit Palm Coast Parkway eastbound. Then you hit Cypress Point. Then you hit Pine Lakes.
Right.
Those are getting close enough that we should be able to synchronize. But then, but by the time you get down to Park View and Rimfire and White View and all those, you've got-
Oh, yeah, and once you pass Pine Lakes, southbound, that's it. You know, it's, you know, there's only about three lights after that.
Then those lights, you're a lot more, want to make sure that nobody's sitting there waiting too long or waiting when nobody's going the other direction. But there's nothing more frustrating than to be able to see that light in front of you, and as you get a green, it turns yellow. And then you hit that red, and then the next one. And so those are the kind of things that we're also going to work on with this program.
Sixty-five miles an hour, you don't care anyway.
Exactly. That's why I was just, I tried to get my car to fly, it just won't do it anymore. Go ahead, get to your place.
Thank you. All right, so now we go into some, to some of the components of doing an ATMS deployment. First of all, we have our fiber optic cable, and specifically within the city, it's called FiberNet. I believe that our IT department does a good job in maintaining it. And as stated last week, there have been, there has been fiber that's been set aside for this project specifically. The next step is, the, the next component is, are the CCTV cameras. In this case, they're going to be just, they're going to be utilized just for monitoring purposes, no recordings whatsoever. Traffic controllers, at this time, we still have about half a dozen that need to be upgraded, but there will be equipment that's going to need to be installed into the, into, to the cabinets, so that way we can provide communications from a central hub to our field equipment. Then we have our, our vehicle detection. At this time, we're just gonna, we're gonna continue to utilize our, our traffic loops. They work, and they actually work well. But in the future, we would hope to work with, with our TPO and be able to procure funding to, to improve upon our detection. So that way, our detection can be utilized for more than just doing traffic detection. Hopefully, we can utilize it for also doing data collection as well. And then, and then we, and then in the end, we, we do plan on having a traffic management center, which, which for our city, it would just be a workstation. We would have one here at City Hall, and we would also have one at Public Works as well. And that would include our servers, the fiber switches, and all the software and everything that's required to run all of this. And then to standardize everything, we have about twenty intersections that still utilize the old-style signal, pedestrian signal heads, where it's just- where it's just a person and a hand, and then the hand just, you know, starts to blink. So we would standardize all of those and go to the LED countdown pedestrian signal heads.
Sean, with the, the closed circuit TV detectors, will those be able to tell us speeds on certain roads? Are they designed like the ones that we put on certain roads to see if there's speeding going on in that road?
No, no, these are just.
Won't give any of that?
No, it won't give any of that. There is equipment out there in that we are hoping to work with the, the TPO to be able to, to purchase those devices. And tho, and those are called Bluetooth readers. And when, and if we do get the opportunity to deploy that, that would actually, that would actually be a great tool in helping us to make sure that we are maintaining good speeds along our roadway.
Question, if I may?
Yes, sir.
About your traffic control centers. Obviously, you cannot man those twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Do they have the capacity of recording traffic data at a given intersection that you can look at, at your leisure and say, aha, I see a pattern developing. This is something that I can adjust for the future.
As of this time, no. It does not.
They are mobile though, so.
Yeah.
You have the ability to log in with a mobile device, so you don't have to be at City Hall or at the Public Works facility. Sean can work twenty-four hours from his home.
But these Bluetooth devices would in fact give us data, all kinds of data?
Yes.
On, on, what kind of cars, you know, the, where they're coming in, where they're going out, all kind, you know?
They.
Depending on how many we buy and.
Yeah.
Where we put them.
They can do that. I know that a lot of municipalities have primarily utilized those to help reduce travel time throughout the corridors. So for, for right now, in two thousand and sixteen, what we would like to do is have twelve intersections fully operational and fully connected, specifically the first corridor on Palm, on Palm Coast Parkway from Florida Park Drive to Pine Grove Drive. That's really our main commercial area right now for the city, and it's our most heavily traveled roadway. So we feel that that would be the best place to implement in at first. That would also include the intersection of Old Kings Road at Kings Way and Cypress Point Parkway at Cypress Edge North, where the Walmart and the Steak and Shake are, and Cypress Edge South, where the old City Hall was located.
We can have that done by FY this year?
Uh, we should, we should be able to at least get the first twelve fully connected. If, if we receive the approval to move forward with this, we will be working within the next week with the fiber contractor to get the fiber installed to the cabinets. And then in two thousand and seventeen, we have twenty-two more and twenty-two more intersections that we would look to have connected and fully working to be able to monitor, maintain, and control all of our traffic signals from, from one point. So what we're looking for right now is the approval for the following expenditures for Phase One, and I'll go through these with you. First would be the purchasing and installation of the ATMS software and hardware components. Then you have the fiber connection at thirty-four intersections. So that would be getting fiber connected on the first segment that, that we plan on having fully connected this year. And for all the, and for the additional twenty-two that we plan, that we want to have connected for next year. The installation of the CCTV cameras and the communication switches at the twelve intersections, as was stated in the last slide for, for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. Then we have the creation of a small-scale traffic management center, which, which, like I stated earlier, would include the, the, the workstations, the, the servers, the fiber switches, and any additional softwares that, that we need to be able to run this whole system. We have the acquiring of the, acquiring of testing equipment for our traffic signal components. As of right now, we're, we don't have any equipment that allows us to maintain some of the vital components that we have in, in our traffic cabinets. On top of that, we also, we maintain about thirteen signals for the state of Florida. And part of our contract with them actually require, requires us to test some of the components that are in there. If, if we don't do those tests, we actually lose about twenty-five percent of that funding from them.
Sean, will the creation of a small-scale traffic management center also allow that to handle the other, the phases coming behind? Once you set this up, is that it? Or will you need another traffic management center down the road for Phases Two through the, through the balance of them?
I don't, I don't believe we will, but we would like to implement some type of, kind of expand upon the system a little bit so that way we can give at least the monitoring ability to our emergency, emergency services staff. So that way, if, so that way, if they, if something comes up, you know, they can always have someone in their office or something, you know, look up what the problem is, where it is, and how to best handle it before they actually get there.
So the forty-nine thousand dollars is the lion's share of the investment. You might have to add some going down the road, but that's pretty much the major portion of your traffic management center?
As of right now, yes.
Okay.
But Sean, there's also other things each year that will come up. I'm not sure you had an answer from me during the workshop about the software. There will be a yearly lease on that?
Um, there will be a yearly maintenance fee on that, yes, there will be.
You know what that amount is?
I believe it's about eight thousand dollars a year.
And the rest of it, is that only for the two thousand and sixteen, the first part of it? Or are we gonna have to take these numbers and then do it again in two thousand and seventeen?
Well, from here on out, all we're really doing is just adding equipment to the field. So that way, we can get the rest of our signals connected to this central system. So the cost, really from here on out, is just adding equipment.
So the purchase of software basically is paid for, except for the yearly maintenance?
Yes, sir.
The fiber connections will all be done?
All phases.
Well, Phase One and Two.
Yeah, Phase One and Two.
Yeah, for thirty, for the, right, for what you, for.
Thirty-four.
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 Uh, the TVs, we'll, we'll be adding cameras next year.
Yes, sir.
And that basic stuff. What, are we doing any recording with the CCTVs?
No.
Not at all?
We are not. We are not. So, and then, like I had stated a few slides ago, upgrading the pedestrian signal heads to, to the countdown-type signal heads at nine intersections for this first phase. In the next year, we'll do the last eleven. And then we've included a ten percent contingency in there, just for anything small that, that may come up. So our, our proposed total, I'm sorry, our total expected expenditures for this are approximately four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And our remaining fiscal year two thousand and sixteen budget for this, this project is five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So for two thousand and sixteen, we look to implement the initial traffic management system as approved by the, by City Council. And then in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and, through two thousand and nineteen, we look to incorporate the future phases in, into the five-year CIP. At this time, if anybody has any questions or comments, I'd be more than happy to take, take them.
Questions?
What happens if we spend the money that we're talking about here and at the end of the first year, when we're contemplating the next phase, we're not happy with the results we see? What then?
Basically, which you're, we'd have twelve of them that were part of the system, and the remaining forty intersections would, would continue to do manually by going out in the field.
But you could say, okay, we, we want to try it for a year, and if we don't like it, you have to take your equipment back. Once you buy the equipment, you own it.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll own the equipment. You may save eight thousand dollars a year, and if you can, the whole system and license fees. But no, you, this is a, considered to be a long-term investment. This, we've put a lot of effort and planning into this. That's why we've had previous discussions. And this is not cutting edge. This is, Sean has visited many other communities, and this is what is considered to be best practice at this time. So we're.
Sean and I have had conversations about this at, at great length with the other communities, and they're, they're all sold on this thing. But all I'm trying to say here is if we make a decision to the tune of a half a million dollars, it's, we better be committed to, that it's gonna, gonna deliver for us.
Yeah, this is, this is considered to be a long-term investment, not just half million dollars today, but as we move forward.
Okay.
And the delivery of what we want is fifty percent on us. I mean, this is just a tool to convey how we want this to work. If we don't, if we don't use it correctly, you know, it's not gonna work well. That doesn't necessarily mean the equipment isn't doing its job.
Yeah, then Sean won't have to work twenty-four hours anymore.
Hit you down to twenty-two.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You know, this, these, this is just a tool. This is a technology to help us, you know, manage the system is the best way to put it. And it is, you know, we all drive vehicles, or we're all traffic engineers, but there's actually people who spend a lifetime perfecting this stuff and go to school to, to do this. And Sean is one of those. And, you know, he's, has experience in this, and, but he's still growing also with this. And, you know, we are needing these tools to allow him and, and future traffic engineers to be as efficient as possible. That's really what we're talking about here.
Questions? Senator, open me from the public. Anyone in the public wish to speak on agenda item number six? Come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Towne, Palm Coast. First, let me, let me ask, what, I'd like an example of what a contingency, contingency item would be. And the second, let me, let's get something straight. No matter what you do out there with these lights, you're never gonna get a perfect system because the driver is the guy that controls how fast you go. If you're going down Bel Tare Parkway and a guy's doing ten miles an hour and I'm behind him, you're really gonna make a light, you're gonna make the light four times waiting. So the only time you're gonna get an absolute perfect system is when they come out with the cars that drive themselves. So, just.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Simzon, resident of Palm Coast. I have a problem in regards to the fact that the main traffic situation seems to be Palm Coast Parkway. And the amount of money we gonna be spending to do this, to me, doesn't seem equitable. You know, we're not Jacksonville, where, you know, there's a lot of main streets that you have to, you know, control, keep track moving. We have, was it five north and south streets? We have US One, Bel Tare, ninety-five, Cobra Lane, and Old Kings Road. And the only main traffic problem that we really have is going through Palm Coast Parkway. And for the expense to try to control the traffic in that one short, three-mile, four-mile area, to me, doesn't seem to weigh the cost of this system. The other thing that concerns me, and I heard it wasn't that these cameras are gonna be recording, but these cameras can be used for surveillance. These cameras can be used to follow people or something, you know? Or is there other agencies, police or whatever, or even the Amber system that may be using these cameras or our system then to follow somebody or something? That's something we need to understand too. Because the technology is making it so that we can follow people from one place to another place, you know, is, is that something that we want to do? You know, maybe we ain't recording, but we can follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is John Brady. This city council is being asked to approve almost one-half million dollars to improve traffic flow. Essentially, cameras will be put on traffic signals for the purpose of being able to monitor traffic from a central location. If the presentation at the workshop is correct, this section of Palm Coast Parkway is only the first of four other planned sections to be completed, and there is no final estimation on the total cost. There are several aspects of the proposed expenditure that are troubling. First, I agree with the assessment in Flagler Live that the benefit is vague. Second, this could be a rabbit hole, rabbit hole of cost with the expenses increasing and future decisions being made to spend money because we've already spent this money. Thirdly, with the hint of a tax increase and with the information received today on the dire, dire consequences of our funding, there is, in my opinion, surely more important uses for this kind of money. Off the top of my head, I can think of funding a senior citizen center, helping to finance amenities such as the golf course and the tennis center. Finally, is there any harm in postponing a decision for six months until a new majority takes over and the total cost of the system is known? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Georgia May, Palm Coast. A question about these signal heads for the pedestrians. It was stated that they're gonna have a flashing hand with the countdown of the seconds. In some cities, they also have an audio there. I know I have a relative who is legally blind but likes to walk. I'm sure we have visually impaired citizens and with the bright sunlight may not be able to see that adequately. And I don't know if it's an extra cost or if that's already in there, if you could have an audio where in some cities it counts down fifteen, fourteen, so the person can understand exactly how long they have to cross the intersections. Thank you.
Thank you. We got an answer for that one. Next speaker. Next speaker. Senator approached the podium, the closed public for a short meeting. Back to council. First, a quick explanation, Mr. Landon. Somebody asked, what is a contingency fee?
Contingency is anytime you have a project like this, particularly a first phase, there's things that happen that you didn't anticipate. Our fiber system, for example, is underground. So anytime you're dealing with something underground, and they're going into an old box, and they might discover something in that old box that, well, we really need to upgrade this because it's going to, you know, be a problem if we don't, you know, those, those kind of unanticipated things. Sean's put a lot of work into this. We're hoping not to have any unanticipated issues, but almost every project like this, you know, your home project, you do something, there's always an extra trip to Lowe's or Home Depot, it seems like, because oops, I didn't anticipate something. Same concept.
Then there was the concern that the cameras might be used for monitoring people, following people, so on and so forth. That is not the case, I understand, since these cameras do not record. You look at them, you see them. I don't know how you. cameras do not record. You look at them, you see them. I don't know how you'd follow somebody unless you track them from Florida Park Drive to Pine Cove Drive. That is not the intent. And there is no mechanism for other agencies to access these cameras? Is that a correct statement?
Not at this time. I mean, if we want to give permission to our fire department or our police force, you know, we can.
But I think the concern that the speaker was addressing was law enforcement tracking people, looking at people, invading their privacy, so on and so forth. If we made it available to our fire department, for example, they would simply know what the conditions are at an intersection as they respond.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the possibility of an audio component on the pedestrian signal heads? I know they have that in Tallahassee, for example. They have an audible countdown. Is that considered? Is it an add-on?
That is something that we have to look at a little bit more long-term. There are ADA requirements that we have to meet. So if, say, for example, we do go to more of an audio version of this, we would have to make sure that the setup, that the crossings are set up the way that they need to be for ADA accessibility. Like, for example, there would need to be spacings, a certain amount of spacings between the buttons. We just, that would, that's a different project. That's, that would be more of an ADA-type project.
But that could be tied to the system we're currently implementing? I think that's the more important. I mean, if we buy these signal heads and they can't be adapted for audio, that's one thing. If they can be, then it's a separate project. We can look at that.
Yeah.
Again, you don't know.
I don't know.
Can you find that for us?
Yes, I can.
It's, our current standards are to have the flashing and not the audio. But as Sean said, if we go with the audio, that's a whole nother.
Right. It's a whole project. But it'd be nice if whatever we do have can be adapted or can be compatible to an upgrade.
Sounds like it might be part of the contingency fund.
There you go.
We'll take a look at it.
Counsel, additional questions, comments, or motion?
Remove approval of agenda item number six, a resolution approving purchases for the signal optimization implementation project.
Your second?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number seven, resolution approving proposed amendments to the CDBG Citizens Participation Plan consistent with federal regulation requirements. Mr. Landon?
Mayor, the next two items are actually combined or bound together. The first one here is a federal requirement, yet to have a citizen participation program for our community development block grant. Federal government has changed the requirements on that and have added some provisions. And so this document just adds those provisions. We don't really have a presentation on it. It's a pretty much housekeeping item that's required by the conditions of this grant. So we're ready to answer any questions. And Jose can answer questions or give additional details if you'd like. You have to have a public hearing on this or no, or give a public comment is why this kind of housekeeping item is not on consent. It's actually in this area.
Mr. Landon, as I think we've discussed before, this is either a yes or a no. Either we go along with what the federal government says you're gonna do, or we say we don't want your money.
Stated, yes, absolutely.
It's that simple.
Yep.
Any counsel questions? One question. How does the public get access to this document?
Alec, Jose, hand.
Yes, sir. The document is posted on our website and we do keep hard copies at our community center and here at City Hall.
With these changes markings?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In English?
In English.
I'm sorry?
In English?
In English. And if somebody requests, we will translate.
Such as you can take federal government regulations and put them in English, yes.
Slight legalese.
Additional questions? Open the meeting to the public on agenda item number seven. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion on agenda item number seven? Approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number eight, which is tied to this, a resolution approving the federal fiscal year CDBG annual action plan. This is what we're gonna do with the money.
Yes. And city council, as we've stated before, the process is very similar to our capital improvement program. We, the federal government requires us to put together a five-year capital plan for CDBG dollars. This is the fifth year of that five-year plan. It includes a housing component. It includes a component for summer camp scholarships for people who cannot afford summer camp at our community center. It includes a quarter million dollars for, in this case, a completion or a portion of the completion of our Seminole Woods Sesame Citation path down in the Seminole Woods neighborhood. And then they also allow us to pay for the administration. So that was in the five-year plan. City Council, Mr. Lorenzo requested, city council supported, adding a component this year for providing grant dollars, I guess, funding, we use a portion of the grant dollars funding for the county medical free clinic. So we have added that to this plan at your request. Jose wanted me to stress that we have to work out the details of that. And we have not vetted that with all the details. It is, sounds like something that would be eligible. It is something that we can work through the details. But we are adding it to this and then Jose will work through the system for exactly how that would, those funds would flow and how that would work. If for some reason, because we, you know, there's something we don't anticipate, if it's, we cannot use it for that purpose for this year, then this small amount, $25,000, we would just adjust the budget and have it go back into the housing program. So we would still receive those funds. So it works out well for us. We can do this. Just want to kind of give you that update from the workshop. With that, once again, this is required to have a public hearing, public comment time. But, and Jose's here to answer any of the detailed questions you may have.
First, are there any counsel questions?
Because that amount that you wanted, Mr. Lorenzo, is not, is not broken down on here, will it, because it's not on our actual agenda, will it still go through that way?
Yes. It's, well, what we have is you have the original and then the update. It's outlined in the update. And then when the plan comes together, and that's what you actually have, the updated plan, the detail, it shows a $25,000. That's what will go to the federal government and that's what we'll use.
Additional questions? Open the most, meeting to the public on agenda item number eight. This is the fiscal year CDBG action plan.
Good morning.
Morning.
Taking some time to hear about our Flagler County Free Clinic. My name is Terry Biletto and I'm the director of the Free Clinic. Our clinic was established in February 2005. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And the patients that we serve are uninsured, no Medicare, Medicaid, or private insurance, and they're considered low-income patients that can't afford insurance coverage. We're, I'm very proud of what we do at the clinic, mostly because we are primarily volunteer-driven. We have about 130 volunteers that operate our clinic. Thirty of those are doctors, nurse practitioners, and dentists that come and 100% volunteer. We have three part-time paid staff members. We have a general office manager who works 20 hours a week. We have a dental assistant that coordinates our dental program that works 20 hours a week. And we have a registered nurse who works 20 hours a week, primarily so that we have a medical professional there every day of the week in case people come in with any kind of an emergency. And then I'm a full-time employee. Our dental program provides a really wide range of services. We are not just an extraction-only clinic. Our dentists assess each patient. So we do fillings. We have a dental hygienist who's also a volunteer. So we're really given a full range of service for our dental programs. The other 100 volunteers really provide administrative help, accounting, quality assurance, our clinic operations, fundraising, and our speakers bureau that is very active. In 2015, we had over 10,000 volunteer hours. And so far this year, we have over 5,000 volunteer hours, January through May. So we're on the growth. We currently see medical patients every Tuesday, every Thursday, and every Saturday, and we see dental patients on Fridays. Our funding is primarily private sector donations up to this point. We have received some grants from Florida Hospital Flagler, from the Flagler County Government, and from the Florida Association of Free and Charitable Clinics. So that's the basics on our operation. I brought my partner, Dr. Steve Bickel, today that's going to tell you about more of our medical. Dr. Bickel is the president of our Flagler County Free Clinic Board of Directors. He's also our lead volunteer provider, seeing about 30% of our patients actually. And he's the medical director of the Florida Flagler County Department of Health.
Interrupt you for a moment. This is public discussion on this particular motion. If you wouldn't mind waiting just a few moments for the doctor's presentation, public participation, then you can have some more time. Is that okay?
Okay.
Doctor, we'll call on you in just a few moments, if that's okay.
Mayor, this is actually, the dollar's added, so this is relevant to this item.
I understand, but the three-minute limit?
For each participant.
All right. Doctor, is your presentation gonna take longer than three minutes? All right, then, let's hear from you now. I'm sorry.
Didn't want there to be any hiccups with the federal requirement to let anybody.
Goodness, no. We don't want to set off ends in Washington.
I'll shoot for two minutes. Thank you for considering this project. We, the Flagler County Free Clinic has evolved over the last few years. It's been in operation for 12 years. And we used to be, just a few years ago, kind of a MASH unit, four days a month, where people would come and queue up and then we'd see as many as we could. And we've sort of been on this growth path to trying to be pretty much like a regular medical office, where we were there three days a week, patients could make appointments, we have referral systems set up. And last year, we delivered, we provided 2,800 medical visits. And we're just building our dental program. So that's like one, I think it was about 100 dental visits. Now it'll be 200 or 300 this year. We do primary care. We treat a lot of diabetics. We have a lot of people who've lost their job due to health problems and we're trying to keep them from sort of sliding down into, you know, poverty and ill health and trying to keep them vital members of the community. In addition to primary care, we have several in-house specialists, retired people who volunteer, hematologists, oncologists, orthopedists, women's health, ophthalmologists, optometrists. And then we've been building a referral network through the cooperation of the Flagler Hospital, Florida Hospital Flagler, with orthopedists, cardiologists. And we're even actually starting to be able to arrange surgery for some of our patients, all for free. We also partner with several local groups. The Town Center Radiology provides free x-rays for us. Florida Hospital Flagler provides a lot of imaging services, plus, as I said, the inpatient component. Stewart March from Mental Health, the Flagler County Human Services Department does, has their own referral network. So the bottom line is that we're getting a lot of leverage off, you know, the volunteers and also our partnerships. We estimate that we deliver over a million dollars worth of medical services if you count primary care, specialty care, medications dispensed, imaging, laboratory, and inpatient. So, and then our goal long-term is to just keep evolving so we can more fully meet the needs of this group, which is probably about 10,000 people in the county. And about two-thirds of our patients are Palm Coast residents. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Before we proceed, several years ago, you had an event at the Free Clinic, I believe somebody was retiring. It was my first time to go through the entire facility and see what you've got. And I know that it's a medical facility and you can't really have tours, but it would be worthwhile if you could somehow let the public know about the extent of what you offer and the quality of what you offer. I was remarkably impressed with what I saw when we had that open house, that retirement party, whatever it was. But it was very impressive. And I think maybe the Chamber of Commerce could even help let people know that this exists and provide some sort of an avenue for more private contributions and donations and support. Okay. Back to city council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on agenda item number eight? Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the consent agenda. There's two items on the consent agenda, nine and 10. Public is welcome to speak on either item, to ask for either item to be withdrawn from the consent agenda before city council acts on them as a group. Anyone wish to remove anything or any comments on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. As usual, please come up to the podium, give us your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Larry Colletti. I live at 64 UGRA Trail in Palm Coast. I'd like to revisit the discussion we had two weeks ago on an item about the new traffic signal going up on Town Center and Old Kings Road. And I know Mr. Landon spoke about having the crosswalk and the signal light green both ways. And I vehemently, vehemently, or whatever you call it, disagree. Okay? And I'm gonna give you my rationale, okay? As a, I don't know, somewhat serious cyclist, I ride over 9,000 miles a year, okay? I was a U.S., United States Cycling Federation racing official. I run the Palm Coast Senior Games cycling event here in Palm Coast. I'm on the River to Sea Transportation Planning Organization's Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, okay? Now that, what I've seen, like last week, my wife and I were riding from Central Avenue and we were gonna cross over to East Hampton, where we live, okay? So we hit the button. We waited for the pedestrian signal to turn white, or whatever you want to call it, for us to walk. And so we started on our bicycles across. There was a car coming off of East Hampton wanting to make a left onto Belt Air. And we both had to stop in the middle of the road, okay? Because they were trying to cross in front. The car was trying to cross in front of us. So I pointed to the, our crosswalk signal, and the driver pointed to their green light, okay? So I see, I did some research, and I found out part of the problem is many residents here moved here from New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, those states. And I looked up their statutes. And none of those states allow cyclists to be in the crosswalk with the same privileges as a pedestrian, like Florida does. So when I moved here three years ago and I got my driver's license, the only test I had to take was a vision test, okay? So, most people assume that the laws they learned in their former home state carry here. So, they're thinking that the cyclists don't have any real rights in those crosswalks. One of the other problems I see is when I'm at that intersection at Old Kings, more than half of the cars when I'm there don't use their turn signal. Now, they have to either go left or right. And, you know, being a cyclist coming off of the Lehigh Trail, I don't know which way they're turning. they're turning, and I don't want to be dead right, okay? Another issue I see is, many people, another intersection that's bad is Royal Palms, crossing at Beltair. Now, many people...
15 seconds, sir. 15 seconds.
Oh, okay. So many people use that crossway where the fire station, 24, is, to get across because they say it's safer than crossing at the crosswalk, okay? It's less dangerous. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have Sean look at it. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Anita Modere, Palm Coast. I wanted to applaud the council and the mayor for their business-friendly focus. I would also like to ask you to be citizen-friendly, particularly in some of the discussions that we had today around fire assessment, electric franchise, and public service utility taxes. These are not equitable taxes and will impact those who can least afford to pay them. Whether you earn $10,000 a year or $100,000 a year, your utility bill for electricity is going to be about the same. So that person who is spending $200 for keeping their home cool is going to spend essentially the same in your tax increases through these flat taxes as someone who's making $100,000. So they're not equitable, and I would ask you to please consider what the impact is on our citizens, many of whom are struggling today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
On another subject. May I?
Counsel?
Or may I not?
Let's, I'm okay with it.
Fine.
It's my consent, and we'll give you a second bite out of the apple. We don't normally, but go ahead.
But thank you so very much. I live on the Cypress Golf Course, okay, which has just closed last week. And I bought my house there, not so much because I wanted the golf balls to hit it, but for the view. Now, I'm hoping that code enforcement will really stay on the course people to keep the grass mowed so that my home values, which means the taxes I pay, will stay up there, okay? That's my major concern, is that, you know, my property value, by keeping the golf course maintained somewhat, will happen, and not wait until it gets, you know, in a really bad state. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jack, out of Palm Coast. I noticed, like, just opposite the, I think it's the little lot opposite the firehouse on Beltair, it's all of a sudden becoming a for-sale area. Yesterday, there was a big boat out there for sale, then they put these little scooters in the cars, and, is that permitted? I thought you'd, they were parking there, you know, at the gratitude of the city now. And I was reading in the paper about this golf course, and they're talking about the city taking over. That's the last thing we need, is another albatross around our neck.
Thank you. Jack, if you could see me after the meeting, so I can find exactly where this spot you were talking about is, across from the fire station?
I can tell you. It's a vacant lot. It's a vacant lot across the street from Station 25.
That's where the walkers park.
City property?
Lehigh Trail and Beltair. It's actually, they use it for that. We're familiar with it, Mayor.
Okay, yeah. And now what we're getting is boats are there, and they're putting for-sale signs and stuff.
Yeah, it's, I drive by it all the time. I haven't seen it, but if that's what's happening, yes, that's not allowed, and we can address that. We know where it is, so.
That's where the park, the walkers park.
Yeah. Thank you. Next speaker.
George Mail, Palm Coast. Jack's right, that lot has become a for-sale sign. People are leaving their pickups cars with for-sale signs, yesterday a boat, so I hope they look into that. Two questions. Yesterday, at the county council meeting, commissioner's meeting, I spoke to them and asked them if they were on social media. I know we have our own website. Speaking to Ms. Sally Sherman, she said they have been looking into that, and very shortly will implement that. Whereas many people, millennials especially, only look at Facebook and Pinterest and Twitter. And as was noted, there was a lot of bad info put on there about the county. And I'm wondering if the city of Palm Coast and their communications department has anybody that follows all of social media. They were waiting to set it up to get direction from the state for regulations, and she said they are about to implement it. Not to go back and forth for everybody who says, "Oh, you did this," or "The city didn't do that," but just to put out there the city's position on a certain subject, whatever it might be. So I'm hoping that the city might look into that and have somebody following social media. I don't know if we do, but I hope that we do. The other thing was mentioned, I believe the last meeting was, the problem with yard waste pickup by Waste Pro. This, since this spring, there's three times that they have skipped my street, and the first time I called up and they said, "Oh, we're sorry, but they have till 6:00 PM to pick it up." They never did, they said they will call the next day, they will pick it up with the trash the next time, which they did. Well, again, they didn't pick it up, they picked it up with the trash. Now, today was trash pickup. My neighbor pruned their palm fronds and left it out there over the weekend. Well, the trash picked it up. So I'm wondering if there are different tipping fees. We're paying a higher fee for trash than we are for yard waste. And if so, is Waste Pro doing this to fill up the trucks, the trash trucks, charging us more money than they are for picking up yard waste? So if that's the case, I would hope, you know, it's looking to, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. You don't approach the podium, we'll close the public portion, we'll go back to council. The issue of the traffic signal at Oak Kings Road and Town Center Boulevard?
I'd love to have a conversation with the gentleman, but he is making my, I use that same intersection all the time. And that left turn, that driver sees him and stops, or you see them. It's a right turn on red, that they're looking left, as you've got the, that is the most feared accident to happen. If that intersection is prime, going out of East Hampton or Central Avenue, they're not, or, you know, coming in and all that. So it's that right turn on red, and we can have a debate as to which one is in love to do it, but constantly monitor that, the intersection, the new one at Oak Kings Road and the trail, yeah, we're going to put up signings, we're going to do some things to try to improve the safety there because it is a major crossing for that trail, and is a, agree with the gentleman, though, at Royal Palms. I don't know about going at other places safer, but Royal Palms, I've had issues there too. It's, it is just critical that we all be very, very safe, and we try to work on it. The other point is, is that we do have a safety program on Beltair, all the way up in, I think it's from State Road 100 up to Palm Coast Parkway, that we're going to do some added signage and things, that will include things for pedestrians and bicyclists. So we may disagree with what's the solution, but we definitely agree with the fact that something we need to constantly look at.
And the key to safe cycling is trust no one.
That's it. That car is not going to stop for you.
Right.
That's just the way it is. Yep.
One of the comments was about citizen-friendly and fees. This is an issue that governments throughout the nation face all of the time. Let me give you an alternative. We have a stormwater fee that's based on the value of your house, and yet if you've got a 100-foot or 50-foot or 75-foot lot, the same amount of water flows in front of a $300,000 house as flows in front of a $100,000 house. So it's always a question of trying to find the most equitable solution for the population as a whole. No, the city is not anticipating acquiring the Cypress Knolls Golf Course. We are looking for ways that we can perhaps assist them, to see if there's something that we can do to make them more viable. The issue of maintenance after it no longer is a golf course, is an ongoing issue, as the residents in and around Matanzas Woods Golf Course are well aware. We will do the best we can. Social media.
Oh, yeah.
Have to fill me in, or Cindy's going to have to fill me in.
We've been, we've been using social media for years, and actually I have a designated person that works with Cindy, and monitor it, use it for our events, use it to get out information, variety of things. Utilities uses a lot. And then even what we're finding is, those immediate, even emergency, the fire at...
Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts. That was, boy, we, that was all over social media. We were there using it too. Definitely agree with the gentleman that we recently had a young person in the office that didn't know how to read a newspaper, didn't know about newspaper. Newspaper is not what they do, what they read to get information. It's all about the social media and the different kinds. And you can say Facebook and Twitter, but I've got a teenage granddaughter, she's beyond that. There's other things out there she's looking at. So we're trying to stay on top of that and keep our policies up to date. So, yes, this is an issue we're all, would have to be in today's world.
The other component of the social media comment was the concern that any number of inaccurate or incorrect things can be posted, and you ought to monitor that. We already have a number of websites on the internet that continuously post inaccurate information about us, the county, and everybody else under the sun. There's very little you can do to control that, other than try to present the true picture.
Your own information. And my training, I remember a few years back when it was starting to become an issue for cities, is the presenter, a young person, asks the group, "How many of you have, are involved in social media, have Facebook page, etc.?" And at that time, not very many hands were raised, and the presenter says, "Well, actually, you all are. You may not be involved and part of it, but someone's out there talking about your community, someone's out there talking about you on social media. You can either sit on the sidelines or try to be a part of it," and that's just the world of today. And we've got someone that's very talented and very much involved in that, that's trying to help us with that. It's, it's going to continue to grow, you're going to continue to see more and more of it.
I think the biggest hindrance, though, right now is the state, in the fact that you can't have open dialogue because we don't have a way of collecting that dialogue, and that would be a problem with the open record. So you've got to be very careful in, you know, putting out event information, putting out what's happening, that kind of stuff's not a problem, but to actually delve into dialogue, especially with any council member, it's really going to get ugly quick.
Yeah, let me clarify, council members, definitely, you have a different, higher level where you can't have a dialogue via social media or any other source, and so, yes, Mr. Nobill, you're right on target. Staff can actually be a part of the dialogue, but we have to capture and keep all that. And so we actually have a system on our social media that if you post it, we're going to keep it. If we post it, we're going to keep it. It is a public record. The keeping it and keeping it posted is a different story. If someone uses inappropriate language, or, you know, makes statements that we don't, that's on our Facebook page, that is not reflective of our values, we keep it, but we don't have to keep it posted. They can post it on their own, or somebody else's, none of our business. But, yes, we're on top of that, and there's a lot of training that goes along with that, including the legal side of it. But, Mr. Nobill, the other point is, is state law, federal laws, they're not up to date. They are so far behind in how this works, it makes it difficult, but we've still got to work within the law and the system and the reality of how people are communicating.
Yep. The final comment had to do with Waste Pro and yard waste pickup at all. Are you going to address that in your comments, or would you like to address that now?
I can, I can address it now. We have had a number of problems, I should say Waste Pro. Let me, first of all, we met with them, and this morning I got a kind of summary of that meeting. It was a very positive meeting. They are acknowledging the fact that they're having difficulties. We've had 10 years of great service. I mean, trash pickup notoriously gets a lot of complaints because there's a lot of different issues associated with it. Their main problem right now is labor, and we're all experiencing that, but they are losing their labor force to construction work, to other work, and so they're having a tough time keeping people, and so they're getting behind on some of their routes. They have people that just don't show up. They are, have authorized locally here for them to hire many people they can get their hands on, which is difficult. They've gone to some temporary labor. They also say, though, and you can kind of appreciate this, that you get a temporary person that's never done this before, the way it was described, a little bit gross, but, you know, about 10 o'clock in this heat, humidity, and the kind of smells and things they deal with, they usually end up puking in the back of the truck and don't last the rest of the day. And so then they get behind, and, not an excuse for them, they have a responsibility to keep after it. They have assured us that they recognize the fact that they're behind and their need to get after it. As far as the tipping fee issue, we have a flat amount that we give, that if they have additional costs because their tipping fees are higher or their labor costs are higher, that is not passed on to the city or our residents here. It's, it's a flat amount per household that we pay them, and then the all costs up or down is on them. We will continue to stay on it. I got an email this morning, one of the trucks, they had a hot load, if you can believe that, caught on fire, so we had a fire truck had to go out and put it out. Well, that not going to be good for that route today, it's going to cause problems.
That's my route.
That's your route, okay. Hopefully you didn't put the barbecue grill, you know, leftovers or whatever, but we're going to stay on them, Mayor, and we've got direct connections with them now, and we'll also stress to them trying to communicate with their customers, our customers, when they are having problems, so that they don't have to call us, we need to contact them whenever we can.
Yeah, I'd like to emphasize that, if you experience a problem, don't let it fester. Don't sit at home and stew and get angry and get upset and raise your blood pressure. Call us as soon as you realize that there's a problem, where there's still the possibility that we can do something to address it.
One last thing is, some of their, because they have new people, they're getting picky about, "Well, that pile's too big or not too big," and we addressed that with them and told them, "If it's close, you need to pick it up, because if we don't agree with you, we're going to make you go pick it up the next day." So you're just going back out. So you're better off...
Pick it up the first time around.
Yes. Now, there's some piles, you see out there, there are just, you know, three, three whole trees put out there by some contractor. They don't have to pick, that is not part of the deal.
Can't be put out there by a contractor.
No, contractors should not be putting anything out, but they do. And they actually will, we know that they tell the homeowner, "Oh, yeah, Waste Pro will pick this up." And then the resident wants to know why they don't, so we try to, we're trying to track down the contractors who are doing that.
They're quitting time contractual, Mr. Landon. Why can't they keep picking up trash till they're done? Do they have to stop at 6:00?
They're supposed to be finished by contract at 6:00. Doesn't mean they have to stop at 6:00. It's more of a management issue out there. I know they cannot start before 7:00 AM. That's a noise issue for people. And I, I don't have an answer for you on that. I know that our contract says that the routes are supposed to be finished by 6:00 PM on a regular basis. We're not going to object if they stay out there longer.
No.
That's usually, I don't, don't think that's really the issue for them, the issue of just not having enough people right now to...
I'd be more, as a customer, I'm more interested in getting it picked up today. If it takes you till 7:00 tonight, so be it, but I don't want it sitting in front of my house all night long because you couldn't get it because 6:00 came and you weren't there yet.
Yes, we agree. And the key to it is, is they're making a commitment, put more resources on it to get it done.
Or work longer hours.
Yep, whatever it takes.
Whatever it takes.
Was there anything, I think that...
That's it. Discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire, we'll start with you, sir.
I just have one. As most of you know, on the 27th of January, my wife died, and I made a decision... As most of you know, on the 27th of January, my wife died and I made a decision to divest of my property here in Palm Coast and go back to Missouri where I came from. I fully intend to do as much as I can on the city council, but it, it looks like I will not complete my term of office. I don't know exactly when I'm going to leave. The, the house tentatively will close on the 29th of July, at which time the new owner will, has the right to take possession. If I can stay beyond that, I will. But as soon as I know when my firm date will be, I will let this council know and I'll let the city manager know. But it, it does not look like I will make it till November. And as soon as I know when that date is that I'm going to leave, I will leave. I, I do so, as Lyndon Johnson would say, with a heavy heart, but without Sandy here, there's nothing here for me in this city. And I'm going, I do, do intend to go back to where my family is in Missouri. So please indulge me and work with me, but I will probably not make it. Thank you.
DeLorenzo.
I do have something. After that, it's kind of hard to talk. I, I got a phone call that I, I knew I was going to get it, and I knew it would come to me, but I, I got a phone call, somebody that was concerned about the alligators after what happened in Disney. I did call Mr. Landon to, because obviously we can't, we can't put signs at every swale and every thing of, any body of water we have. But we did come up with something that sounds like it will work, which will, just to let people know who aren't from Florida, people who are visiting, to let them know that there's alligators there. Somehow they don't know Florida has alligators. But if you could just explain what.
I was going, I was going to talk about it in my comments too is, you know, first of all, you know, the tragedy at, at Disney, you know, what can you say? It's a huge tragedy. And, but the fact of it is, is that here in Palm Coast, and just in Palm Coast, the, the critter experts tell me that we probably have over a thousand alligators within Palm Coast that live amongst us.
They're not paying taxes.
They're not paying taxes. It is a fact of life in, in Florida. You know, as the gentleman points out, whether it's you riding your bicycle or it has to do with different critters, most people who moved here or are visiting here don't have alligators in their backyard. We literally have people that have alligators in their backyard. The rule of thumb in Florida, including Palm Coast, if there's a body of water of any size that's got a gator in it. And, and trying to get that, educate people that that is the case. And if it doesn't have a gator in it today, they migrate and they, they move from pond to pond. It will have a gator in it tomorrow, potentially. Recently, we saw the gator decided to walk across the street and use a crosswalk. You see them on our golf courses, you know, they're, they are all over. So trying to get that word out to people. But the other thing that's important is it's not just alligators. Right now, because of the tragedy in, in Orlando, that's the focus. But we have very dangerous snakes. We have black bear in this community. We've spotted a black panther, a Florida panther, in, in one of our parks. There are a variety of other critters that can do a lot of damage and, and kill people. And it's important that we all try to be educated as to what, what those hazards are if you're out and about. Ms. Shipley was talking about, you know, what are we doing? Well, we've talked about how can we help educate people the best we can about some of those hazards out there. And, and the key to what happened in Orlando, in my opinion, was it was on a beach. It was not a ocean beach, but it was actually kind of a beach setting into a pond. And, and it's at that interface where you have people who are interacting or being attracted to the water, where the, an alligator can be, is that where that becomes the most dangerous point. There's a lot of ponds we have around here that you can't get down into the water and has very little chance of interacting with that alligator. So what our experts are looking at, along with our, our park team, is any place that we have where, where people may be attracted to get down to the waterfront or, you know, like even our canoe kayak launch, that would be a good place to have an educational sign that says, you're about ready to enter waters that have alligators, they have water moccasins, there's, you know, a variety of things. And, and they're working right now on trying to do some educational piece. But to put up a sign in every water body in Palm Coast is inefficient, it's not going to work. It's, I mean, you know, Grand Swamp has, you know, hundreds of alligators, you know, where are you going to put it up? Snakes, you, you walk, you bicycle along our trails, you're going to run into snakes. It's, they're out there. And we've done some education about snakes on our trails and we have some signs about the snakes. And, and we're going to continue that. But I think this brought more awareness as far as that interface of where people go down to the water. And swimming's not just the issue, it's just they learned here, is that you don't have to go swimming for, for a gator to, to decide that they, they want to attack. So that's what we're going to try to do. Also, I'm trying to use this as an opportunity, every opportunity you can, is that we have alligators in Florida, we have alligators in Palm Coast, and, and snakes and a lot of other things. And so it's important to educate ourselves. One of our safety training programs for city employees, we brought in an expert to go over those hazards. We have people out in the field, you know, identifying snakes. So what do you do to help protect against certain insects as we're out cutting bushes and trees and things? So would encourage everybody to do that. Hopefully, we don't have that type of tragedy here in, in Palm Coast, but it's, whether it's crossing the street on a bicycle or interacting with our waterfronts, et cetera, we all have to be very careful. So we're going to try to put together something, but not signs on every canal. I mean, that's just, just not practical. I mean, but every, all our canals out there, particularly freshwater canals, there's alligators in them.
There are alligators in the saltwater canals also.
Yes, and saltwater canals, you might have even some in the intercoastal. They don't like the saltwater of the, of the intercoastal. But what the experts tell me is they use it to migrate. So they're going to be out there and they may not be, that may not be their habitat. But where the freshwater comes in, they, that brackish water, they will hang out there. So there's a lot of places, if you have water.
And they love pets.
Yes, absolutely. To let your dog go swimming in a water, body of water here, not a good idea. That, that, you know, where I came from, yeah, that was all part of fun, throw the ball out into the water and to the lake. But here, you do that, they may not come back. Trying to educate people that that's just a fact of life here.
I have two items. One, for information, this afternoon, the county is hosting, I guess its third civil citation issue, which is dealing with the civil penalties versus criminal penalties for possession of 20 grams of marijuana or less. There are a lot of issues associated with this. My anticipation, based on the last meeting, is that at some point, the county will present a draft ordinance and each municipality will have the option to opt in, opt out. The concern being, though, that unless everybody opts in, you're going to have this checkerboard of jurisdictions that is going to make it impossible for law enforcement. But just to keep you posted, that meeting is, I believe, at 2:00 this afternoon at, 1:00? 2:00, I would have gotten in for the finale. Okay. The other issue, Mr. Landon, something that I've raised several times now, give me an update on Holland Park. I am very unhappy with the progress that I am not seeing. I took a tour there the other day with some city staff at my request, and there were maybe five people in total working, representing three different subcontractors. We're well past the initial completion date. We're not going to make the next anticipated completion date. What are we doing?
Well, as we talked about last week, we worked with the attorney in our city attorney's office, who specializes in construction contracts and, you know, construction law. And they drafted a formal notice to the contractor that was sent to them last Friday stating that either you put together a recovery plan, a plan to expedite construction and show us what a schedule is and stay with it, or else we're going to cancel the contract and, and go to the performance bond company. And, because that's kind of the step, is that they have a performance bond, they're supposed to be performing. If they don't, the bonding company is supposed to step in and take over. And we sent that notice to the bonding company, have called them and put them on notice that we will expect them to come in and take, take over if they, the contractor does not start stepping up the game out there. Report I got was last Friday, Monday, they're getting word that we're getting cranky about this. And they had more subs out there, still not at the acceptable level. We have asked for face to face and they've agreed to it for this, later on this week, Thursday or Friday, to sit down and say, okay, what is your plan? And we've, the problem is, is their credibility is totally zero because we've sat down with them numerous times. I've been in meetings and said, you know, this, this project is very visible, it's, you know, parked to people, we need to get it done. And they said, oh, yeah, you'll see a big difference tomorrow, next Monday. Doesn't happen. So we're not going to take their word for, yeah, they're going to step it up. We're going to continue to pursue the legal act avenue to get rid of them if they don't do what they need to do. I have to caution that that process is time consuming also. You can't just cancel a contract without, and it's usually, most contractors don't, let's just say they, they, they fight back. And then that becomes a legal process and then that can drag out too. So I'm not going to say that that's a silver bullet, we'll get it done real quick if we kick, kick the contractor out. But it can't be any slower than what we're doing right now, in my opinion, so.
What do they say is their problem, Mr. Landon? Is it manpower, is it the weather, equipment, material? Why aren't they?
Yes. They've, they've said subcontractor, they've talked about weather, they, they talk about everything except getting it done. They have more excuses than they have workers out there.
The excuse that I heard was that one of the early subcontractors got way behind. So all of the subsequent subcontractors who were going into work have since gone off and found other employment. Now they don't have the, the secondary subs. All of which makes, I understand completely, but not my problem. So if this process takes longer, I don't see any evidence that they're stepping up yet. And I'm going to ask that we get periodic updates from, from our project management people. It's not getting done any quicker now, so if we have to take this other route, it's, sure, it's going to be a delay, but at least I need to see light at the end of the tunnel as to our residents.
We, we all agree.
Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick follow up on the discussion we had earlier about social media. And I just wanted to remind the public that when, when they're on social media, in their, in their private social media, they have a greater sense of, of security that it may or may not be subject to scrutiny by the public. Whereas if you participate in the social media associated with a governmental entity, it's public record. So whenever you post on whatever type of social media you engage in, that's a government social media, that is a public record and can be subject to a public records request by whomever or whatever. So I think it's important for the public to understand that. I would hope the public could also understand that there are limitations upon your elected officials and their participation in social media as well. For example, there are certain types of hearings that, that, that these folks have to participate in, called, or called quasi judicial hearings. And they are limited as a matter of law in what, how much they can say or do before those hearings because they are in the nature of quasi judicial. So there could be a level of frustration because the public says, well, why, why won't they communicate more with me before the hearing, before this quasi judicial hearing on social media? And that is because as a matter of law, they're, they're, they're prevented or at least expressly limited in their ability to do so because of the process involved. And of course, they have to be very careful not to violate government sunshine as well because as, as, as Mr. Landon said, the, the Florida laws regarding public records and, and government sunshine were drafted without ever contemplating that the nature of social media would advance so rapidly. And so the, the laws just have not caught up as far as trying to, to have them apply to these new forms of social media. So I just wanted to add that.
Crafted with inkwell and quill pen.
That is correct. That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Couple of events. One that happened this weekend is coming up again this coming weekend and then, but I'll start off with Food Truck Tuesday, assuming the weather cooperates, that is this evening. Very, very popular event starts at 4:00, or 5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m., right here at Central Park on Park Street. And then it's tournament season. We had our huge tournament touted as probably the largest one in Florida, lacrosse tournament was both in Indian Trail Sports Complex, but also Wadsworth Park out in Flagler Beach, County Park. It, 134 teams. I, I heard about having to wait an hour for a table at a restaurant, you know, I've, I hear about Publix. One of the, my, my granddaughter plays and was in the tournament, so I was out there. And one of her teammates, manager of Publix, and he's sitting there talking about how they're slammed, and, you know, I'm just smiling the whole time, ran out of bananas, I understand. So it, it is huge to, you know, weather semi cooperated, but semi didn't. Saturday's games got cut off short. I was happy to say that Hannah's third game, her final game, Lightning started right after. But there were a lot of teams that didn't. Why do I say that? It's because they had a lot of makeup games on Sunday. So they had, normally you have a group kind of come in and park and then leave and other groups come in, but they were all there Sunday. And we had parking issues. And I'm kind of sitting there going, well, that's actually means, that's a good thing too. I think our guys did a great job. I know at Wadsworth, they had, they had issues too, worse than normal because of the, the Sunday situation. Saturday wasn't all that bad. The other thing that really highlights is the need for restrooms at the middle school. That's another complaint we hear. Of course, when you're sitting the sidelines and some of the people know who you are, they come and tell you what they think. You've never had that experience, right? But we've also gotten the emails from people from out of town, how come there's no restrooms at the middle school? It's a middle school. The middle school, they, they don't need restrooms outdoors. But that's where we are on design for restrooms there. I know the county is just wrapping up or maybe they are open, I'm not sure, with new restrooms out at Wadsworth Park. County also doing some, adding some parking and things. So we're recognizing and trying to make those improvements and, but it's, the return on investment's huge with the number of people, probably eight to 10,000, I would estimate. I've heard six to eight, but visitors here and for, for a very positive event. And then this weekend is three versus three soccer. So a couple of weekends ago, we had flag football, flag football champions, Florida championship, this big lacrosse. And then this coming weekend is soccer. So it's that time of year, it's really, and they all brag about the fields, they love to stand on the sidelines and hear, boy, this is a nice area. A lot of visitors from all over the state discovering Palm Coast. The last thing I'm going to bring up, I think is actually a very positive thing too, but it is best practice, proactive approach. One of the benefits of Mr. Quinn and having him as our finance director is some of his background in, in the private sector. He's brought, as you all know, a number of innovative practices for a community our size. And, and one of them is he's a certified fraud investigator or detector or something, you know. Examiner, okay. And so he, in, in his training, and particularly, it's uncommon in the public sector, but quite common in the private sector, is to actually set up anonymous hotlines and ways of reporting fraud. And it's one of those that, once again, being pro- And, uh, it's one of those that, uh, once again, being proactive, it's not like we have a problem, but the best way to make sure you stay away from problems is to, uh, have a lot of eyes and ears out there and, and then give them an opportunity to report, uh, issues and problems. And this is gonna be opened up for, uh, employees, but our customers, our residents, our businesses, anybody we interact with. So I've asked, uh, Chris to kind of give you a little briefing and, and use this as a kickoff, uh, for sending out information that if people see things they don't think is appropriate, uh, they don't have to send, uh, you know, the mayor an email or the city manager an email, they can, that always works too. But there's also gonna be a anonymous hotline that they can say, hey, I saw something I didn't, so that we can investigate. So Chris, give them a little bit of the details, please.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Landon. Part of, uh, generally accepted internal control systems, particularly in the, uh, private sector, is to have a, what they call a hotline or a reporting hotline. Many of them have different names across different companies, but it's an important part of your internal controls and management of fraud, waste, and abuse, or the term you hear, uh, actually, the professional term is occupational fraud and abuse is often the term that you hear. Um, it's a major issue for all businesses, uh, particularly, um, you know, if you think about, uh, retail businesses, how, how much they struggle with, uh, shoplifting, but they also have internal shoplifting, where they have their own employee issues also. So the idea of setting up a hotline is giving an anonymous place for people to provide us basically tips and insight into poor business practices, uh, anywhere where there's, uh, waste, waste of, of resources, waste of, uh, money, um, and where there is abuse, abuse of someone's position, um, abuse of authority, uh, abuse of purchasing power, things of that nature. Um, these hotlines, uh, basically, they've been around for years, they're relatively new to governments, there's not a lot that are doing them, they're recommended for governments to do. We're very excited about having it as another, uh, part of our transparency initiatives and as another tool in our overall internal controls. Um, and it does, the, the primary key of it is it allows people to report either by phone or by email or electronically to a third-party, uh, group of experts that can talk someone through, providing us actual actionable information that we could use in the case of anyone wanting to report fraud, waste, or abuse. So, um, basically, a lot of statistics show that nearly fifty percent of all fraud, waste, and abuse is, in, in organizations of our size are uncovered through tips. Most of those anonymous tips. Um, and from those tips, nearly fifty percent of those tips are generated by your own employees. Uh, and having a place where someone can anonymously, uh, put that information in and as well as track it is basically the, the main way of soliciting that information and getting that information to kind of keep your organization on top of its internal controls and its overall reviews. So that's, that's basically the, the background of the fraud hotline itself.
If I could close on comments, is, this is actually in our strategic action plan, it's one of the, um, uh, performance measures we have, one of the strategies. Uh, and it was, uh, came out of our internal control team, uh, something else I'm very proud of that, uh, was Chris's idea that he brought with him to, to the table, uh, that we actually have a, a team of employees that help with the investigation. So we have HR experts, we have, uh, some law enforcement experts that, uh, help with this. Because many times, uh, we wanna, wanna stress is that people see things that look bad, they think is a problem, they give us the information, many times, no, it's, it's actually the employees doing what they're supposed to be doing. A very common one for us is we have a lift station out on the beach. So you'll see a, 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 a city vehicle parked literally in one of the beach parking, you know, the, the beach access parking lots. Well, if you see that city vehicle out there at two o'clock in the afternoon at the beach, you're going, how come the city employees at the, yeah, okay, so, but we, we can track that and see that employee was, yes, actually out there doing the maintenance work on that lift station or, or doing the inspections, et cetera. But still wanna hear those comments because then we can track it down, and if they are not supposed to be there, then, then it helps us because, uh, it's reflection on all of us. But, uh, this is, uh, something the internal controls team work with, finance and HR, and, uh, I, I, uh, once again, uh, Cindy will help us get the word out to the public that we have this new tool. It's not just, uh, amateurs investigating, this is, you know, a company that does this for, uh, as, um, as a profession. So, uh, you know, hopefully, we don't have to use it. Uh, but when you have four hundred employees, it's always good to, uh, have that opportunity. And I think it also helps employees too, because if they know that they've got, uh, eighty thousand people out there with an opportunity to, to watch them, uh, that, that helps too. So, Mayor, that's all I had today.
Just out of curiosity, in the email address, what's the TNW in front of reports?
One question.
TNW is the, uh, third-party, um, company that we work with to provide the network.
Now, this collection of data is under the open records also, even though it's a third-party?
Uh, is, is, after the investigation is complete, just like with law enforcement, if we are, uh, have an ongoing investigation, it's not a public record until the investigation's complete. And then at that point, uh, it is a public record, yes. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you all.